I'm calling to order the Finance Administration Committee meeting of November 9th. Will the minute taker please call the roll?
Alderman Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Suback. Alderman Shockey.
Here.
Alderman Pisick.
Here.
Alderman Coles. Alderman Knype.
Here.
Alderman Tolemy.
Here.
I declare a quorum present. I make a motion to approve the minutes of October 12, 2006. Is there a second?
Second.
And a question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And what I'm going to go ahead and do is I'm going to move item seven up next because we do have the auditors present here to go through the audit for '05-'06. So with that, I'm going to hand the floor over to our interim Finance Director, Ms. Powers.
Chairman Winger. This evening, we have Mr. Lou Harrison from Sickich LLP with us. He represents the auditing firm who completed the audit for April 30, 2006. He has a few comments for you, and if you have any questions to direct to him, he'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you. You have before you two documents, the comprehensive annual financial report and the management letter itself. And the comprehensive annual financial report is just a brief summary. It's prepared in accordance with the highest standards of governmental financial reporting. It's sent to the Government Finance Officers Association for its review and evaluation as far as meeting all the disclosure requirements that are required by generally accepted accounting principles and their programs. It's a fairly rigorous review. You've received the certificate for a number of years as far as their approval goes. The report itself is organized in three sections, introductory, financial, and statistical. And it contains a management's discussion and analysis which in kind of narrative form and tabular form really hits all the highlights, if you will, of the numbers, so to speak. I'll direct your attention to page one and page two in the financial section. I'll give you a chance to get there, right behind the tab. And these two pages, page one and two, constitute our opinion which is unqualified, which means we believe in our professional opinion that your financial statements present fairly your financial position and the changes in financial position for the year. These are the only two pages in this document that really belong to the auditors. All the financial statements, all the presentations belong to the city. I'll stop at this point and ask if anybody has any questions about any of the amounts in there or that I can attempt to answer.
I believe there's none at the moment.
All right. Then I'll move on to the management letter, the smaller document. This management letter basically contains our recommendations, if you will, for improvements in the city's accounting and financial reporting. We do not do a complete evaluation of internal control. That's beyond the scope of our engagement. However, we do evaluate internal control for the purpose of performing our procedures. And I'd be glad to take any questions anybody might have regarding any of the recommendations that we have made.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Before you, you have a handout of this presentation. What I did was go through the audit report, fund by fund, and I'm really going to highlight for you what's changed from the budget and what actually happened. As you know, the budget is merely an outline. Most of it is based on estimates. Very little of it can be carved in stone before it gets passed, but it is supposed to be a guideline for you so that we know whether we're going to run out of funds, whether or not certain projects can be undertaken, things of that nature. So can I have the first slide, please? Okay. That's the wrong one. It's the wrong file. Sorry, I think they picked up the wrong file. Okay. You'll recall that we had a, we originally thought that the general fund would have $105,236. I call this surplus because that's the word we use during our budget preparation, but actually what that is, is revenues in excess of expenditures just for the 12-month period. We actually ended up with over $2.4 million, and obviously that requires some explanation. So I went through and highlighted the main points. First of all, the city was very lucky. In every fund where we had cash available, we have much higher investment income than we originally budgeted. That's due to the fact that we've had interest rates more than double in the last 12 months. So that's good news for all of the funds. Secondly, we had much higher building permits. There has been discussion with this council at several other meetings about what to do with these funds because we know these are one-time-only funds coming from some new developments. And as a matter of fact, in March of 2006, over $873,000 of building permits were issued for 16 single-family homes, just in the month of March. So that was the Bristol Park subdivision. So that's happened during the fiscal year ending April 30, but we're not going to see that recur. We also had higher fines and forfeits. You may recall that a new administrative program was initiated by the police department. This has to do with impounded automobiles. That was successful this year. We had more bond forfeitures. We've been whittling away at those escrow accounts on building projects that have been closed in prior years, and so that also is reflected in that $211,000. But primarily, that was fines and the new administrative program. We had some miscellaneous income. There is always some income that we don't know about that comes in later. It may be money that's due to the city or some kind of an award that we weren't notified about. Two very important things. We did have vacant personnel positions in the finance department and community development and in the police department, and those positions have not been filled. So while we had budgeted for them when the budget was passed, they were vacant pretty much for the whole year in the finance department. We did not, we did not replace our Assistant Finance Director until quite late in the fiscal year.
I'd like to give another example. For example, in the, in the police department, salaries accounted for the largest decrease. This is reflected in the fact that the department operated with one less patrol officer which had been, then originally budgeted. And we had done that in the past because we were short on, on funds. In addition, a communications supervisor resigned and the position was filled with the junior telecommunicator, which created a surplus. This alone counted for a surplus of $111,000. Also, being conservative with overtime and also the leave buyback program brought us in another almost $100,000. And so by managing our operations, we can, we can cut the costs. And we had no idea, since we projected a very low balance, we were very careful in how we managed our departments.
Thank you. The next item is the reserved for health insurance claims and the unsettled union contract. As you know, Local 150's three-year contract has not yet been settled. So again, when we begin the budget in January of 2007, we will have to set aside funds for that, and whenever the contract is settled, there will be retroactive payments made to the covered employees. So this is the second year where we've, we've basically budgeted for settlement and it hasn't taken place. There were also were monies held aside for excess health insurance claims. That's been discussed several times, and those claims have not yet been collected. So again, we'll be rebudgeting them. If, you'll notice there's minuses in front of anything that was an expenditure, but forget that and add all those numbers on the page, and you'll come to about $2.28 million of that surplus. The rest of it is all minor items, so I didn't bother to list those. We did have other cost savings. We look at a lot of different vendors. We saved some money on operating supplies and office supplies. You'll see later on in the enterprise funds, just a change in a vendor for the dump fees that come from the sewage treatment plant resulted in a large savings. So as the manager said, we did a lot of that this year, a lot of whittling, a lot of looking around, taking a new look at expenditures, and that has resulted in it. But the main things are those deferred items that are going to come up, the payments to the union contract, the health insurance, and certainly those building permits which are unlikely to occur again.
And what I would like to say is all the diligence by staff as well as council is certainly appreciated. I certainly do appreciate it to have the outcome like we do have today. Alderman Tolemy.
Before we go on, okay, there's a couple of things I'd like to address with the general fund first. Okay. To be accurate, the numbers, can you go back a slide? Can you go back to that slide?
I guess I can't. Okay.
Okay. To be accurate, the numbers, if you add all those numbers up, it actually comes out to $2.2,235,343. Now, what we need to make sure we understand is what Maggie's saying here. The $821,000 that's listed there is over and above what was budgeted in the department for that year. So we had budgeted $425,000, and the actual on that was $1,246,000 that came in in building permit fees. So we've talked about it, Maggie brought this up. We've talked about taking any excess because it is one-time monies, and we really shouldn't look at that as, that it's there, it's going to be there in the general fund. We've talked about using any excess in a redevelopment or putting it into a special redevelopment fund, and I would like to make sure that we don't forget and that we earmark that $821,229 for that, specifically for that purpose, and that we give the Finance Director and the manager the direction to go ahead and open that account and make sure we move the money. And it's just an accounting entry to move it to a fund. It's still in the general fund, but it's an accounting entry that would show that that $821,000 is earmarked then for redevelopment, as we've all said that that's what we want to do because of the fact, again, it is one-time money. What I want to make sure people understand too is that when you talked about the vacant personnel positions and the reserve for health insurance claims and the unsettled union, those actually, really out of the $2.4 million, we really deduct those out because those are expenses that we're going to incur in the next fiscal year or whenever, okay? But we will incur those. So the net really is about $763,000. When all said and done, it's $763,333 is what we actually end up with the surplus. So I just, again, I don't want to make a big issue out of it, but I wanted to point that out, and I wanted to say that when you look overall, I believe, and Maggie, correct me if I'm wrong, is it four months or six months that we're supposed to maintain in the general fund?
The state of Illinois says between six and eight months.
Okay. And based on where we are right now, okay, in the general fund, you're looking at approximately 11.9 months of balance. So we almost have a full year's worth of balances. That includes the $821. Now, if you take out the $821,000, and again, as we earmarked that for redevelopment, you're still looking at about 11.8 months surplus. So that means if everything went south, this city could survive for almost a full year without bringing in a dime. Again, you've got to understand, though, that there are, these other factors, though, will come into, into play. The union, we're going to have to pay the union, what, you know, with the vacant personnel positions that weren't filled, that probably will be filled, but all that will come back in next year's budget. Correct?
That's right.
Ms. Powers?
One other point about fund balance. City of Wooddale doesn't, doesn't budget for contingencies or emergencies, but many communities do. And part of what happens with fund balance in the event of an emergency, like a flood or some kind of an attack, monies are needed absolutely immediately to buy supplies, perhaps to get equipment and personnel in place. And so there isn't any time to go to another route to borrow money. You need to have the money available to you. And so because we don't budget for that, you have to always remember that you want to have that six to eight operating, but you want to have that cushion for the emergency because it could happen at any time. Okay. If that's on the general fund. The Water and Sewer Operating Fund. First, I want to remind the council that this is the year where we added together the Water and Sewer Operating Fund and the Water Sewer Depreciation Fund. In prior years, the Water Sewer Depreciation Fund was used strictly for capital projects for the water and sewer utility. And because those were added together, you get this rather distorted picture. You'll see that we originally budgeted a deficit of $1.5 million, and we ended up reversing that and having a surplus of $1.4. Part of that is because of action that this council took after the budget was passed to increase the water and sewer rates. Those were effective September 1 of '05, and they were first billed to the residents November 1 of '05. Again, we had higher investment income, which was good. We had a little glitch with the telecommunications tax because there was a mistake made in accrual from the prior year, so that $136,000 is part of this difference. And then we had lower personnel costs, again, because of vacancies. We did have lower depreciation expense. We had just over budgeted on that. Notice that we had lower engineering costs. The water projects and the sewer projects were postponed. So you've got $1.3 million of that difference in the fund is just due to the postponing of those capital projects. I mentioned earlier, you'd see that there were dump fee savings because we have a new vendor. That was a nice savings of $31,000. There were some other contractual services that were looked at carefully by the City Services Director, and consequently, some money was saved there. You recall that the DuPage Water Commission did reduce the rate that's charged for water. That was done after your budget was passed. That saved the city, or the residents, $70,300. And then there were some lower other operating costs. This fund is in much better shape than it was last year at this time, simply because we've combined the two. The ending fund balance in the Water Sewer Depreciation Fund was about $700,000 before we combined the two. So that went into the Water Sewer Operating Fund, and now there is some actual cash balance. If you looked at the audit and you looked at the last number on the Water and Sewer page, you'll see that the fund balance is listed as about $15 million, but in fact, most of that is represented by fixed assets. So it's the cash that we're concerned about, and the cash is a little over a million. So better than, better than where we were. But we, I think we have about six months operating.
Alderman Tolemy.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Could we talk a little bit about the water projects that were postponed and the sewer projects that were postponed? Because my understanding is some of this money is for a project that we decided not to go forward with as well, I mean, completely not go forward with. Is that correct?
Some of the money is, that is correct. Some of the money is for that Wooddale Road Water Main, which you elected not to go forward on. A majority of it is for projects like the Woods Lift Station, the Tower II painting, other projects that have since started and are going forward with.
In this fiscal year?
Yeah.
In this, okay.
Alderman Wesley. Ms. Powers.
Thank you. Shall I go to the next fund?
Please.
Okay. Sanitation Fund. To remind you a little bit about this fund, you'll recall that two years ago, the sanitation fund was only charging for the direct cost that BFI charges to pick up the garbage. And because the sanitation fund had to cover some administrative expenses, that, that fund was in a deficit position. So you authorized us to add the service charge that should have gone on in 2004 to the increase that was already scheduled for 2005 and add it together in the hopes that we'll fix this fund. It's getting fixed. The general fund had to loan the sanitation fund $65,000 just from a cash flow standpoint. The $15,000 was really needed immediately, and the 50 is the normal transfer that the sanitation fund makes to the general fund to cover all the administrative services that the general fund provides. But that just couldn't take place. So my hope is that during this year, now that we have the rates where they belong, we will slowly work away at that and fix this fund for good. We'll talk about it again during budget time as far as whether that administrative charge is too high or too low, but essentially, the sanitation fund was, was running in the red for quite a while, and now it is not. Commuter Parking Lot Fund. Big difference there is the $200,000 developer contributions that were received. Again, this is one-time-only money. Matter of fact, we received the last $50,000 that was due today. We just got that check today. And so that money is all earmarked for the station. None of it is going to be used to operate the commuter parking lot fund. I will tell you that revenues basically were flat. There seemed to be about the same number of daily users and the same number of permit holders. There were parking lot improvements done this year, and thanks to our City Services Director, they were a little bit lower than we had originally budgeted. So that was good news. And also, there was some higher investment income. So that fund, that fund is doing fine, but that 200, now it's going to be 250,000 is already earmarked for something else. Capital Projects Fund. We ended up with a lower deficit than we expected, and the, a lot of this has to do with the timing differences. This is the only fund where, no matter how hard we try, we will never get it right. The Capital Projects Fund is a, is a dynamic fund. At the beginning of the budget, we try to do our best to find out how a project is going to progress and then figure out how much revenue, especially if it's a grant, is going to be reimbursed. At the same time, we try to figure out how, how much of the project will be completed so we know what will be billed by the vendor. We never know. You, you will remember that we received an invoice for $212,000 on the bike pedestrian bridge from three years ago, and we got that in March of 2006. So this fund, when you try to project it, you can't really do too much. The best we can do is say, when we have a project, if it's going to cost $2 million and somebody's going to reimburse us for half, do we have the other half? And if we don't, where will we get it? Because the rest of it is all timing. And you'll see here, we have $676,000 of timing differences because of the Irving Park Metro Project and because of the bike trail, and there's nothing anybody can do about that. We did make some higher investment income. We did collect a little more utility taxes this year, and we received an unexpected reimbursement from Bensonville. I say unexpected, you may have been waiting for it. I knew nothing about it. So when the check came in, I had to find out what it was for, and it was for the 2004 Street Improvements. I'm sure that was an agreement that the council knew about long before I came on the scene, but $63,000 to the good, it's now in the Capital Projects Fund.
Alderman Wesley.
I have one question. On the last one, there are timing to revenue for I-DOT, I task force preserve. That's a negative of $6,000, $676,450. What, what is that? Why is there?
That's what I, well, what I'm saying is the revenue was lower. The revenue that we, we thought was going to be in there, which matched the expenditures, it didn't happen because the project didn't progress as much as we had hoped during the budget. But there, we don't control that. The city doesn't control that at all. It's the engineers. You know, they're, they're doing their part of it. So as I told you earlier, make sure when we're talking about revenues, you're going to, where you see the plus, you add them, and then you subtract out a revenue that was lower. When we get to expenditures, the opposite is true. That's so I could keep the math straight and end up back to that, that deficit balance. But I-DOT, this was, this is a hard one again because we never know how much of the project is going to go. This I-DOT Metro Project has been going since, I think you received the Build Illinois Grant in the year 2000. And I think feasibility is finished and Phase One is just about finished or is just now finished. All right, two more years just for Phase One. So we, we can't, we can't predict. And we put the, we put it in the budget, but the way we budgeted this is, in other words, if I pick up half million dollars of reimbursement, then I'm going to pick up $500,000 of expenditure too so that we're not distorting the budget. But when it all is said and done, then I have to show you what really happened, you know? So you're going to see on the next page the same kind of thing. Now, now look here. The timing of the Irving Park Metro Project, the expenditures were $837,000 lower. You see?
Alderman Tolemy.
Yeah. And I think one of the things you might want to point out, Maggie, too, is that when you see like these timing differences, Maggie's right. When we're the lead agency on a lot of these projects, especially when we're involved with other communities or I-DOT or something, what happens is we get billed on these things. We have to pay the construction or whatever, whoever it is. And what happens a lot of times is that we don't get the funding back until maybe the next fiscal year. So I'm guessing, but my hunch would be that if, if we were looking at next year's report right now, you'd see the reverse of this money. You'd see, hopefully, we got it this fiscal year, okay, from these agencies.
Yeah.
So that it does, ultimately, it does offset itself, but it there, it's, that's why there are the timing differences, okay?
Yeah. And there isn't, there isn't any way to predict this at all. That's why I say I try to balance it out. So if I'm going to pick up expenditures of a certain amount, I'm going to pick up the corresponding revenues for budget purposes. But then we can't accrue a revenue as receivable until the service has actually been rendered and we know that the project's been approved for reimbursement. We're carrying, you'll notice the last line on that slide says, "The entire ending fund balance is all restricted." That's all Build Illinois Grant that is unexpended at this point, but you're going to spend it as, as you go forward because that's the city's 25% match on this project. Metro's paying another 25%, and I-DOT's paying the 50%. And, and then I'll, I'm not even going to mention this. When we get into budget, I'll talk about how I-DOT wants to give us more money in advance, which we'll never spend, so we'll have to give back to them, but not tonight. Yeah, I know. Then we'd have to find it. The motor fuel tax fund, road and bridge and tourism and narcotics forfeiture, I put those together because those are the special revenue funds. They can only be spent for specific purposes. We did better in those funds. Again, higher investment income was important, little bit higher hotel motel taxes in the tourism fund, so that was good. We collected some drug seizure monies. I'm sure you'll recall the chief saying every year, "There isn't any way to tell when these monies will be dispersed to the city. It's not up to us." And so we, we collect it when we can, but we, we never can put anything in the budget because we don't know when it's going to materialize. We also got some higher road and bridge property taxes because that's not part of our levy. That's the township's levy. That's another number that is always a guesstimate. Expenses. You'll see this huge number, $376,000 of leases capitalized, and it looks like we had no clue what we were doing when we budgeted. This is strictly from an auditing standpoint. If you'll recall, the city is paying for the VAC door equipment and several dump trucks. They're all being leased. In, in accounting and auditing terms, those are capital leases because at the end of the annual payments, the city will own the vehicles, okay? So you'll see that they were put in as contributions and they were taken out as expenditures. The net effect is, it has no effect on the fund. But budget to actual, it looks very distorted, and that's why. So I wanted to mention that to you. These are just those, those leases for the trucks and for the VAC door that, from an audit standpoint and from a proper financial accounting standpoint, they had to be capitalized for this purpose. We did have some, we didn't have any equipment rental expenses for special events in the tourism fund. I'm not sure why that is because I don't know what sort of equipment's been rented in the past, but there was a savings. And there were, was less equipment purchased in the narcotics forfeiture fund than was originally budgeted. So that concludes the, the highlights that I found. I thought those would be of general interest to the council, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Alderman Wesley.
I have one question. Why would it be in this, why would it not go back?
Which? I'm sorry, which fund, sir? Oh, it's just. Oh, because it's narcotic seizure money. It can only be spent, yeah, it has to be spent on that type of activity. It, it doesn't become a general revenue. It doesn't become a general revenue. It's very specific, just like motor fuel tax can only be spent on approved street projects. Yeah. It's not like a fine, a little different.
Alderman Tolemy.
I think overall, I'd just like to say, I think that it shows that we are moving in the right direction in the city. And I want to thank Maggie, the finance director, for everything her and her staff have done, okay, to get us back on track. At the same time saying that, I would like to make a motion to authorize the finance director to create a redevelopment fund within the general fund and to move the $821,229 into that fund. Hopefully, I have a second.
Second. And a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. So you have your direction.
Ms. Powers, do you need a motion to sub the audit report and management letter?
Yeah, I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion to sub the audit report and management letter presentation for fiscal year ending April 30th, 2006. Is there a second?
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Our next item is report and recommendation for tax abatement, SSA number 11. Ms. Powers?
Thank you, Chairman Winger. Just a reminder that special service area bonds are not a legal obligation of the city of Wooddale. We do have a special service area fund and essentially, the city acts as a fiduciary to collect the property taxes that the county has extended and pay the debt service on the bonds, and that's all the city of Wooddale does. We have no liability whatsoever for any bonds. Special Service Area 11 has been around for quite a few years, and it did not expend all of the bond proceeds that were originally collected for the project. So the correct way to handle that is to abate the tax that the county clerk will be extending on the bonds for this year. And we did that last year and we'll do it next year. We'll do it till we get it down to one year's debt service. And then at that time, the clerk can extend the taxes again and the taxpayers will pay the property tax. It'll be remitted to the city and then we'll pay the final installment on the bonds. But I gave you a little background on this. There's about $63,000 in that fund right now, so we have a few more years to abate. In fact, there was a, I think I found that in the summer of 2004, the city council had passed the abatement, but it was never filed with the county. And if you don't file it with the clerk, they go ahead and extend the taxes. So that was probably an oversight. I think there was no one in the finance department during those few months in the summer, and that's probably how it got overlooked. But we'll catch up here. We'll just keep going. And that's what this is. You'll see this coming to you every year. It goes at the same time as the regular tax levy.
Okay. Then I'm going to make a motion to, in the case of SSA number 11, to bait the amount for 2006 levy is $12,500.
Second.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is 2006 tax levy report and recommendation. Ms. Powers?
Thank you, Chairman Winger. Next is a covered memo and then you'll see a sheet like this that gives you the history of the property taxes in Wooddale for the last five years. This is just the property taxes that the city of Wooddale extends. There, up at the top also are the valuations for the EAV for the city. And you'll see that most years, there's been an increase of between 6% and 7%. One year, it was only 4.19%. But the way this works is, the city levies an amount of money. The county clerk takes that amount and does a calculation based on the tax cap, and they come up with what they call the limiting rate. The limiting rate, then, is used to multiply by whatever the equalized assessed valuation is determined by the assessor. And then we end up with our property taxes. So what I've done is take last year's actual levy, increase it by 4.99%, because we want to stay under 5%. 5% is your limit, your first limit. I came up with the taxes and I've allocated them pretty much to the same line items as they've been in the past. You could, of course, change that. You could increase, for instance, you could increase the line for police pension if you wanted to and reduce the line for corporate purposes. Or you could eliminate the audit line item entirely and increase another line item. But this has worked fairly well in terms of allocating resources once we get, collect the property taxes. But the clerk will take this $2,395,360 and they will calculate the limiting rate. They're going to reduce this somewhat because we're limited actually to the consumer price index, the increase in the consumer price index. But because the variable here is the equalized assessed valuation, we don't know what that is. So we don't know how the rate will turn out. We have to allow the clerk to make that calculation. But what we would do is have a tax levy. It's got to be passed in December. Send it to the county. The county will record it, then they'll do the limiting rate. And they usually let us know what our new rate is sometime in March of the following year. It's important to note that Wooddale has no general obligation debt. Therefore, the rate of property taxes has gone down every year for the last five years. Last year, it was 3.37740. And this year, the way I'm calculating, it would be .37031, but it'll probably be a bit lower than that when the clerk gets done with the limiting rate.
I make a motion that a tax levy ordinance be prepared for consideration at the first council meeting in December. Is there a second?
Sure.
And the question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a report and recommendation for the Fenton Band Booster's Request for Donation. And this is something that Alderman Subak is also bringing forward as well. So Alderman Subak, would you like to take us through some of this as well?
It's just a request from the Fenton High School Band. They make an, or they're doing a trip. Last year, they were unable to go because they couldn't get the funds. And they brought in Jim's towing service, Jim Cassane, and he is attempting to come up with some of the shortfall. And basically, it's $300 per child to offset some of the cost for these kids to go and they'll be playing out in California. So staff's recommendation is to do a contribution. There's additional money in the miscellaneous item in the tourism fund this year to cover this. We do do a project with the Chamber of Commerce to do the scholarships every year. We've donated money in the past, so I don't think this is outrageous amount. So I'd make a motion to approve $300 donation to the program to come from the tourism fund.
Second, on a question?
On the question? Alderman Tolemy.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that in the event that they are unable to raise the funds, that we wouldn't expend this money, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay. I have another problem.
Well, I would, my suggestion would be, why don't we keep in sync with what we do for the chamber scholarship and sponsor for to go and make it a total of 1,200. Keep it uniform like we do for the other. Alderman Tolemy.
I don't think you want to do that. And the reason I say that is because we've had this conversation, well, we've discussed it before about making donations or the city making donations like this to different things. And what potentially is going to happen is you're going to have every school and every other place coming in here and asking for the money. And the city just cannot afford to continually donate that kind of money. We just don't have it. So I would say, this is a one-time thing. Let's leave it as a one-time thing. Leave it at the $300 mark and that's, you know, and do it like we've been doing it, you know, where we look at them as they bring them to us. We look at them and if we can do it, we try and do it. I don't want to make it a standard thing.
Anything else on the question? Motion stands as is. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is for information only, the meeting of the DuPage Water Commission. And this is certainly something that I like to see us attend, to have representation there. And with that, I'll ask our interim finance director, Ms. Powers, to take us through the most recent meeting that you attended.
Thank you, Chairman Winger. As you know, the DuPage Water Commission not only collects operations and maintenance funds and debt service funds from all of its member communities, but it also imposes a sales tax, a quarter percent sales tax. And that is beginning to generate huge unrestricted fund balances. So the commission invited finance directors and city managers to a meeting to discuss various ways of disposing of those funds. It's very interesting. They, one of their proposals is to de-fees their general obligation debt, but the member communities are paying for debt service on the revenue bonds. There was no talk of getting rid of the revenue bonds. Right now, Wooddale pays about $124,000 a year to support the debt service on those revenue bonds. And that's half of what the true debt service is. They're already using some of the sales tax to reduce that debt service payment, but they didn't, they did not suggest de-feasing the, de-feasing means to get rid of them, pay them all off early. They did not suggest that. They wanted, they want to de-fees the general obligation bonds. They've also managed to take $80 million of net assets and restrict all but about $7 million. They've set up what they call a rate stabilization fund. This is to keep that rate decrease that they passed on last summer, keep that going. Their new finance administrator did a projection that goes out to the year 2024 and showed that they could actually keep that rate low for the next 18 years by using a rate stabilization fund. They also have a low income or a low-interest loan program for people who are in unincorporated areas of DuPage County. And these folks are dealing with contaminated water. Not exactly sure how that program is being administered or how many people have taken advantage of it, but they mentioned that they've got another restriction they're calling their construction fund. They gave a long wish list of capital projects that they want to do for the commission. And these included things like having an energy farm with a bunch of solar panels set up at the Lexington plant, adding pump number 10. I have no idea whether that's, you know, that's important or not, but a lot of things of that nature. And they would in fact be able to pay for these things. They wouldn't have to borrow any money to do them because they've got the sales tax there. So the way they concluded the meeting, they asked for member communities to be specific about their recommendations. They also said that they were going to probably refine some of the suggestions and get back to each of the member communities. I presume at some point, there'll be another meeting or there'll be a ballot or there'll be some solicitation of everyone's opinions as to what program they want to follow. But they are awash in cash. That's all I can tell you.
Alderman Wesley.
You said that they want to freeze the water rates at a fat rate for us now?
Well, they call it stabilize it, what they charge, what they charge member communities.
Does that mean that we might be able to do a freeze on our water rates then if they leave it at that rate? Or no?
Well, I made the point to them, and I think it's in the minutes from the meeting, that we didn't appreciate the comments the commissioners made last year. They reduced their rate and then immediately turned around and said they were sure none of the member communities would pass that savings on to their residents, never for a minute, giving any thought to the fact that our water rate has to pay the salaries of the water personnel and the gasoline to put in the trucks and the infrastructure that's in the ground. They didn't even, they didn't even think about that. They were bringing it down to the level of, well, if we only charge you $1.20, then that's all you should charge, not even, not even getting it. So they were calling a rates, they were calling this rate stabilization. They weren't talking about reducing it any further. They were just saying that perhaps they could keep that in place indefinitely. And in that sense, it would be a help because we were able to come up with a lower rate increase for Wooddale because we could take that into account. But it's not, 20 cents per thousand gallons is not a whole lot of money when you consider, we've got, I think, the billing that just went out yesterday, I think we had 5,711 customers. And it's on the backs of those people that the entire water and sewer system is placed. So that's why our rates are, I mean, if you compare rates in Naperville to rates in Wooddale, the people in Wooddale end up paying more because they still need the system in place, but there aren't enough shoulders to put it on. And so that's part of this whole water commission. I think that's why they invited all the member communities. They wanted to get a cross-section of opinions, but they have not refined their suggestions yet.
Alderman Subak.
Did you tell them you were from Wooddale when you were speaking or just say you were?
I certainly did. And I wore my red blazer so they wouldn't forget.
Well, your attendance at these meetings is certainly appreciated and truly critical. And that item is for information only. Our next item is for information only, IT new service support provider. Our current IT service provider, we've been having some issues with service and also, and coupled with raising their rate, staff feels we're not getting the appropriate service or the value out of the provider. Staff has sent out requests for pricing and information to other vendors and is looking to move forward with another vendor. And with that, do you need a motion to proceed or purely information only?
This is provided as information only, and as you can see by the assistant manager's report, the city's been diligent in keeping our costs down much lower than any community around us. So just to let you know how this is being done, and we are switching, we are going to be switching vendors, but we will not need to increase any costs. So this is for information only, and we will continue to look at ways to reduce our costs.
Item is for information only. Item number 10, items to be considered at future meetings. Item A, financial accounting software payroll outsourcing. Are there any other items? Alderman Subak.
One is the evaluation, the rollback on the vehicle sticker increase based upon the passes of the 1% sales tax increase. Item C would be the evaluation on the water and sewer rates based upon the passes of the 1% sales tax increase. Not looking for this on a rush, and it probably need to be done on a Saturday strategic planning meeting, but at least kind of an evaluation of thanking the citizens for passing that 1%. But with that, what can we do now in return? Thank you.
Any other items? Okay. I concur with the, oh, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly, I want to concur with Alderman Subak and thank the residents for passing the sales tax referendum. And also, it's not on the agenda in a place, but I need a place to squeeze this in. I want to invite all the members of the community who are veterans to the Veterans Breakfast this Saturday at Salt Creek Country Club. That'll be at 8:30 a.m., followed by the memorial service at 11 o'clock at the Wooddale Memorial. And the breakfast is being sponsored by I task a bank and trust. Not only includes the veterans, but your families, grandkids, spouses, whoever you want to bring at Salt Creek Country Club this Saturday, 8:30. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I just want to ask the city manager before I get into my meeting here. Do we have, do we have anybody here tonight with, for my meeting? Do we have any guests?
No.
No?
No, we don't.
Okay. Then what I'd like to do is, I'd like to see, could we move this back further in tonight's, in tonight's agenda? Because we've, I noticed there's a lot of people in the audience tonight, and I'm sure they would like to go home, you know, at some point. So maybe we could move it up to go to meeting three now if everybody's in agreement? We'll just do mine later.
Okay, I call the planning, zoning and building committee into order. Let the minutes reflect that all the members, current members are here and Alderman Subak has joined us, so he is now included. And Alderman Coles. Sorry. I didn't know. Snuck in, Joe didn't see him. The next item is approval of minutes of October 12, 2006. Do I have a motion? Approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carries. Next item is a report and recommendation, case number 06 SU9 Genuine Parts Company, doing business as Napa Auto, 372 West Irving Park Road, special use permit request with lot consolidation. This is continued. They had the table at our last meeting and... This is continued, as we had the table at our last meeting, and it was continued. The developers were going to, I think, bring us a new concept in the actual building materials and architectural renderings of the new building, which I believe you have received in your packets.
Okay, gentlemen, if you'd like to...
My name is Bill Oswald, and I'm here representing Genuine Parts Company, and we appreciate the opportunity to come before you again. As you stated, we're coming in front of you with a revised proposal, and it is based on some of the ideas that have been given to us by staff, and some of the ideas that have come out of our previous hearings. And what we have in front of you, and I think it's in your packets as well, it may not be rendered in the packets, but this is the revised landscape plan that we're proposing. And the revisions that we have made to it is that we have reduced some of the impervious area, meaning the parking lot asphalt, and we've increased the number of landscape islands, trying to increase the open space and green space. And so what we've done here is we've illustrated to you how we've increased the number of islands in the parking lot. We've reduced the stalls from 31 to 25, and they're still meeting code that way. And the other items that I need to point out with this landscape plan is that we have included in the entryway, the so-called pork chop, which is symbolic of the right-in, right-out entry that we are going to propose for this development. The building orientation, if you'll notice, is still the same as it has been. And I need to point out, when we get to the elevations, that we've increased the glass on the facade that faces West Irving Park Road. And we've done that to answer some of the staff's concerns about the openness of the facade and the transparency from the street. If you would go ahead and put the elevations up, I would appreciate that. Okay. The, there is some clarification to that, as I've previously stated with the site plan. This is the elevation that faces West Irving Park Road, and I hope you can see it well. The labels are not real clear. This says site elevation. It's the way we talk about it, but it is the Irving Park Road elevation. And what we have done is, we've taken some of the glass that was on the long side, and we've moved it to the front side here, trying to increase the transparency on the view from West Irving Park Road. And some of you may have noticed that we've, we've pretty much kept the glass area the same for the total building, and that's due to the fact that the sales floor display wall area is pretty well spoken for. So, we did take glass from the side view, and we put it on the front view. The other things that we've done to the design is, we have gone sort of through an evolution from a CMU building, or concrete block building, which is our prototype, to, in the last meeting that I was present at, we presented a concept that had quick brick, which is another type of concrete block, but it looks like brick. Well, we've now gone to full modular brick. And we've got areas that have got upgraded block at the bottom, which is, it's not the normal CMU. This is a architectural product that is used for wainscoting in higher-end buildings. We go to modular brick above that, and then we have some synthetic stucco cornice work up at the top. And I've brought a color board to illustrate the color selections that we've made, and I think the most important thing to point out is that we're going to be using real modular brick on this building, which is different than what we've presented in the That's my presentation. I do have the civil engineer with me, and our traffic engineer is present, as well as the property owners, if you have any questions.
I have a question. On the repair and ditch to the right, where our staff engineer said it should remain open, it should not be enclosed as a storm sewer or so. Is that, in your engineering, is that part, you're gonna leave that as is?
That's correct. The floodplain area to, on the east side of the property is, as was originally proposed in the original plan, we're not filling any floodplain and impacting that area at all.
Okay, and another suggestion was made that, have you had any opportunity to contact the owners to the west, to possibly see if they would allow for a traffic exiting full access out to Irving Park?
My name is Dan Wander. I am one of the property owners, and at the village's city suggestion, we did contact the property owners to the west about two different alternatives. One alternative was, is that, was to try to work together with them in terms of trying to grant some kind of cross-access and cross-easement, and they were not receptive to that. We also asked them to potentially be able to purchase their center, to be able to, then be able to try to maybe be able to do a larger development here, or some kind of more comprehensive development for that center, and that was...